Good evening, everybody. It is seven o'clock on Monday, October 5th, and we will call this meeting of the Sault Ste. Marie City Commission to order. Could we get a roll call, please?
Mayor Gary.
Here.
Commissioner Baker. Commissioner Bospis-Rath. Commissioner Collins.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Talentino.
Here.
Commissioner Twardy.
Here.
Commissioner Baker did call the city manager today asking to be excused, so would somebody like to make that motion?
Make a motion to excuse Mr. Baker.
Support.
The moved and supported, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. He's gonna... All right, so, um... Commissioner Miller, if you are ready, if we could all rise and pledge the pledge of allegiance, if everybody would please mute their phones. Commissioner Miller will help us in the recitation here.
Thank you, Your Honor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Appreciate that. Moving along into mayor comments and general announcements. Certainly, we're living in turbulent times, lot going on. We've all been working through these COVID times, and certainly now it's hit the top level in our government, and we've had some differences in our state government approach as well. So we certainly offer our thoughts, prayers to our president, First Lady, and all Americans that have been inflicted with COVID, and hope that we can continue forward to resolve the problems that this terrible pandemic has brought before us. I'm not going to reiterate what Brian Chapman will talk about, what the state of Michigan has done in response to the Supreme Court striking down all of the governor's executive orders, so he's gonna talk about that a little bit later. But the state has moved, and the state is the entity that, the appropriate entity to do that, and it's not the local governments that you wouldn't want eighty-three counties enacting all kinds of different rules to enforce COVID requirements. So, city manager will talk about that in a little bit, but certainly thoughts and prayers to everybody that's affected with COVID. And please, everybody, continue to practice social distancing, wash your hands frequently, stay home if you're sick, wear face coverings, clean and disinfect surfaces often, and avoid exposure at large gatherings. And I want to thank the Chippewa County Health Department, who really has been a local leader on giving us information and tracking and helping with contact tracing for the few people that we have had that have tested positive. So they've been doing a great job in the local community, so we thank everybody locally. Everybody's doing a great job. We are not affected as much as a lot of other counties. If you look across the UP, Delta County's got some really high numbers, but ours have maintained. So if everybody keeps doing their thing and doing the right thing, it certainly will help to end this a lot sooner. So that's the extent of my comments. Moving on to, into item B, proclamations and recognitions, we have none this evening. Under item C, public comment. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to make any comments on any of our agenda items this evening? We also have, at the end of the meeting, matters that are presented by the public, so you can come and speak on any issue. But if you would like to speak on any agenda item, please give us your name and the agenda item, please. So if you could unmute if anybody wants to speak to any agenda item this evening.
Yeah, my name's Tom Mansfield. I'd like to speak on behalf of rezoning the 309 Armory place.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, we'll call on you when we get to that item. That's great. That is item G2. So Tom Mansfield, anybody else that would like to speak on any of the agenda items?
Angie MacArthur, the Eastern Upper Peninsula Intermediate School District, to speak on G2 as well, please.
Okay, Angie MacArthur on item G2 as well. Anybody else that would like to speak to the commission on any of the agenda items this evening? Okay, seeing no more, we'll move forward. So we have two people that'll speak on item G2. F Communications, we have none this evening, so we'll move right into our G business items. City manager, whoops. Well, I'm skipping right ahead, eh?
And E.
Let's get this over with. Yeah, consent agenda, I'm sorry. So, moving on to D, consent agenda, Deputy City Manager, Robin Troyer. She's giving me the aye.
Under the consent agenda, we have one, approval of the city commission meeting minutes of September 21st, 2020. Item two is reappointment of Derek Knight to the Planning Commission for a term to expire on April 19th, 2023. Item three, reappointment of Wendy Hoffman to the Planning Commission for a term set to expire April 19th, 2023. Item four is schedule a public hearing for single lot assessment rules SL-2N-20 and SL-2W-20. And just to note, there was an updated rule that was placed in the agenda packet. The original one that went out on Thursday with the packet is in there, and then the updated one to include or exclude those that have paid since. Item five is consideration of a request from Jessica Fountain for a lot split to divide parcel number 051-618-005-00 into two parcels. Item six is consideration of a request from Jeff La Hoste for a land division to divide parcel 051-065-002-00 into four parcels. And item seven is approval of the consent agenda items as presented.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager. Would any commissioner like any of these items removed for individual consideration? Or would you like an explanation of any of these items? Seeing none, Commissioner Twardy.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Bospis-Rath. Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Talentino.
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed unanimously. Now, so E, special orders of business, we have none this evening. F Communications, none. Moving into G, business items. City Manager Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Up first for commission consideration, excuse me, is a request from the assessor's office for approval for a service agreement with a contractor to provide appraisal services for several tribunal cases that we have in the hopper right now. These are the smaller ones. And typically, within that process, we bring on a contractor that would do a second appraisal on the properties to be submitted as evidence, so to say, within the tax tribunal. So this particular item has two motions. We will look for a motion to authorize agreement for $24,000 and a motion to amend the budget for the $24,000.
Okay, let's go through the roll call and see if we have any questions or comments. Commissioner Bospis-Rath, any thoughts?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Collins.
No, thanks. I'm good.
Commissioner Miller.
How did we come up with, how did we come up with that number, $24,000? Staff bid out a proposal with the cases on them. We had two service providers turn in bids for the contract. The one was at $24,000, and the other one was just above that, but they also didn't follow the parameters established within the bid. So we are... Yeah, so it was a bid. The short answer was, we bid it out.
Thank you.
Commissioner Talentino.
Also, Your Honor, thank you.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. I just wanted to say extreme disappointment again in our state legislature, who continues to not fix this at the state level. There must have been some sort of article recently comparing us to other states around us, because I had a couple of customers today who were saying, asking why this hasn't been solved in the state of Michigan, and how much it does impact us every single year. So hopefully, we are continuing to add this to our huge folder that we continue to give to the MML and give to our state representatives, so that they can see, I don't understand, because not only does this affect our local budget, it affects the overall state budget. So this is big loss to the community, and just really a lot of disappointment, but I do support this, this motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Twardy, and I couldn't agree with you more. This is just basically disgusting. When you look at the grid of the seven property owners, it's an entire tax loss of over $50,000. And not quite as much to the city, but it's nonetheless a big loss. It impacts our students and our educational system. It inspects, it impacts the county and certainly city services. All of these businesses do enjoy, you know, the benefit of doing business, and especially right now during this pandemic. The larger businesses have thrived, have flourished because of some of the square footage and spacing requirements, and some of the more restrictive governance and the executive orders that we had that restricted low, smaller businesses. And that's not to mention the impact that we had with our Meyer and impending Walmart dark store issue. So, one question I would have, city manager, is these are all, most, some of them are dark store, I guess, what would fall under the dark store. So are we getting any participation with the county on these expenses? Or any of our other...
These ones, no.
No?
And these, these are, these are smaller cases. They're similar to the dark store theory. These are smaller ones. We typically have handled these ones ourselves. I don't believe we've ever reached out. And I, I guess somebody wants to correct me, but I don't believe we've reached out to our other local government units for any assistance on these ones.
Well, just so everybody watching knows that this impacts everybody. And City Sault Ste. Marie is bearing the brunt of this cost for these appraisals, so. Commissioner Bospis-Rath, would you like to make the motions?
Absolutely. Motion to authorize this manager to sign a contract for appraisal services with Anderson Appraisal Services with a cost not to exceed $24,000.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any questions or comments before we have a roll call? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bospis-Rath.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner...
Who'd you say, Robin? You broke up.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Talentino.
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yes.
Mayor Gary.
Yes. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. City Manager, item G, business items, number two.
This is a two-part motion, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Come on, man, I'm on the clock. You gotta give me some time here.
I'm not batting very good tonight, am I? Can we get a reset? Commissioner Bospis-Rath, would you like to take the second one, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to amend budget for assessors contracted services with an increase in the amount of $24,000.
Support.
Okay, it has been moved and supported. Any questions or comments before we go to roll call vote? I'm ready for a roll call.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Talentino.
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yes.
Mayor Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Bospis-Rath.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. I used to sit next to our former mayor, and I always wondered why he sat there and doodled on the agenda and checked off all the items as he went, but I guess now I know. Keep track of where you're going, Don. So now we are at G, business items, number two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Up next for commission consideration is a request from the ISD to rezone 309 Armory Place from residential, family residential, multifamily residential to office space. Within the packet is a detailed analysis from Director Freeman and Community Development Department. Along with that is a recommendation from the Planning Commission to deny the request. To present some information is the petitioner, Ms. MacArthur, with the ISD. As soon as I'm done here, we'll kind of turn it over here, so she can speak on this request. Staff went through the analysis. Within the analysis, we have to look at it in its entirety, not specifically the use associated with the request. So when we look at rezoning requests, anything in the office service designation would be a permissible use with, on that parcel, regardless of the property owner. You know, we look at it from a standpoint of if the ISD rezones it, possibly resells it, or if they sell their entire operation, move to a different site. We look at that potential with these rezoning requests, among other factors such as the master plan, future land use map and current use map. And we do have concerns with rezoning from office service or from multifamily to office service in some of the uses that could be contained within that designation. Other than that, there's quite a bit of detailed analysis within your packet. If you do have any questions, we'd be more than happy to entertain them. I believe Director Freeman is on as well, so he'll be able to help us out with anything I can't answer. So other than that, we will turn it over to Mr. Mayor, or if Ms. MacArthur wants to speak at this point, I would recommend that.
Okay, I think, yes, before we go to the commission, we'll open it up to, if you said Ms. MacArthur had some information she wanted to present us, and then we also have Tom Mansfield that would like to speak as well. So, Ms. MacArthur, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm ready for COVID and all its related stuff to go away, because I would love to be doing this in person and get to meet you. The Eastern Upper Peninsula Intermediate School District entered into a purchase agreement with Carol Suika, who's the owner of 309 Armory Place back in July of 2020. The conversation had been going on for about a year prior to that. Initially, we talked about utilizing the existing building as office space, and we were told by Director Freeman that we needed to apply for rezoning in that capacity, as well as utilizing it in a different way. As we explored our current facility and our current number of employees, we really decided that expanding on our current building would be a more appropriate solution. We've been working with an architect. I don't have renderings to share with you. I apologize for that. There's lots of delays right now, but we need about five feet of the next parcel to do, to add an addition that would enhance the neighborhood, not detract from it. We would want to maintain the architectural flow of the current building. We want to add 10 offices and a small conference room to right-size our existing building for our existing employees. We're not looking to add 10 more employees. Any remaining property to the west would remain green space, because that's, that's an important part of a neighborhood, and we want to really be thoughtful in how we plan this out. Based on our current zoning requirements, the, we have sufficient parking for the anticipated expansion. I checked with Director Freeman on that. Our goal is really to maintain our offices here on Armory Place. This is a beautiful building. I think we have done a nice job maintaining it, and I, I think we're a good neighbor. We'll continue to maintain it. Our footprint in the neighborhood is rather limited, in that typically our business is from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. We're not an industrial endeavor. So I'm respectfully requesting that the city commissioners approve our request, and I appreciate your time tonight. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you very much. Any questions right now for Ms. MacArthur, before we move on to the next speaker? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Mansfield.
Good evening.
Hello.
I'm sorry, can you hear me, sir?
Yes, sir. We can hear you loud and clear.
Thank you for just giving me a little bit of your time. I, I do live in the 309, and the ISD has been a great neighbor. I want to preserve this house. She has been in negotiations with Carol Suika, that's my sister. I just got off the phone with her and secured my own negotiations for the house itself. It's a hundred-year-old house. It's been here for decades and decades. I think that it should be able to remain here. It's a beautiful house, and I think that it should not be tore down for parking lot or more office space. And I'm sure with the amount of people that are working from home due to this COVID, that there's probably less place being used over there as it is now. They do have two parking lots. Now, I understand the flow, and they, they want to keep going, and if they're gonna stay there, that's one thing. But if they're considering moving their operation, I think it's just a waste of a house to tear it down for that purpose. And I just, I appreciate your time. I just want you to know that this is the house that I'm trying to save. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mansfield. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to commission for questions on this topic, and moving down the roll call. Commissioner Collins, we'll start with you this time. Any questions or comments?
Well, maybe a question or more of a comment. I guess my, my thought process is, is that on one side, you definitely want to preserve the neighborhood, and I understand that. On the other side, we, you know, definitely want to do whatever we can do to help out local businesses. And even though it's a government entity, it's still considered a commercial property. I guess one of the concerns I would have is that if we don't allow the expansion, is that gonna be a vacant building at some point, because they're gonna move someplace else, even outside the city? So I guess that's one of the thought processes I have in reference to, you know, if we don't approve it. But then on the other side of it, I understand that it doesn't go along with the master plan. We're also adding on additional housing and trying to provide additional housing inside city limits. So, you know, by approving it, it actually goes against what we're trying to do. So mostly just comments. That's just kind of what I'm thinking.
Thanks, Mr. Collins. And just a question, I guess, for city manager in regard to what he just asked. What, how is the original building zoned? What type of uses could be in there if, if it were vacated and sold? Is that also the office service zoning, or is that more liberal?
Are you talking about the existing structure right now, right in the ISD's end?
Right.
Director Freeman, can you help me with that?
Certainly. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. The other types of uses envisioned in office service are things of like administrative or professional office nature, banks, medical clinics, dental clinics, things of that general sort.
That's what the ISD is zoned right now?
That is correct. Existing building and property that they hold on the north side of Armory has that zoning designation.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Miller, any questions or comments on this agenda item?
I know, Your Honor. It looks like Director Freeman has been pretty, pretty good with everything, with all the background information, so I'm good. Thank you.
Commissioner Talentino.
Thank you, Your Honor. As everyone knows, I sit on the Planning Commission as the liaison. So basically, I sit there and just listen and don't talk during the entire meeting. But now I get a chance to speak, and, you know, as far as this one goes, it's really tough for me, because one, I do think the ISD has done very, very well for our community. Look at the amount of money they just spent in the food services industry's downtown loan. Granted, I know we don't have that now with the COVID issue. And I don't want to see them go outside of Three Mile. You know, I think as a commission, we need to do everything we possibly can to maintain the businesses with, inside the city limits. Also being said, you know, I look at some of the older houses, and some of them are starting to get renovated. Some of them have been getting renovated for the last 10, 12, 15 years. So this, this is a tough one for me. You know, I just, I like the direction that, what the ISD wants to do with it. For those who have not ever been in the ISD building, the employees right now are physically, they're basically sitting on top of themselves. You go into any of their offices, and it's just, you know, the bodies are right close to each other. So I do see their intent, they're just making some more office space. You know, like Mrs. MacArthur said, you know, they're just looking to make more offices, not to add any more employees. So as far as additional stress level down there, as far as traffic, what have you, I personally don't think it's gonna change. And myself, I'm all for letting them go and do it. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Commissioner Talentino. Commissioner Twardy.
Sure. Well, so this is my street. This is the street that I live on, and the ISD has been a great partner, and so has St. Mary's School. However, that being said, this is a residential area. This is a residential street. And it is a very, very, very busy street between the Chippewa County Courthouse, the, the, all the courthouse annex, the, the county buildings over there, St. Mary's School, and the ISD. You try to drive down my street headed east or west in the middle of, in the morning or in the evening, and you can't get down my street because of the street parking and all of the people that are working here. And we have to remember that right now, four of the homes on our, on this street, or on this block, are vacant at the moment. So that means there are not residents living in four of the homes. So if we continue to add more cluster to this street, it's really going to change the way that it is, and it's a residential area. I'm not in favor of taking any residential property off of the tax rolls, and I'm not in favor of getting rid of any homes in the community, because we're trying to bring more people into the community. You know, that being said, I do think that the ISD is great, and they definitely take care of their property, but I am in favor of the home staying the way that it is, and that being a historical structure, we have the property owner right here on the phone, and he's trying to save his property. So that speaks volumes to me. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Commissioner Twardy. Commissioner Bospis-Rath.
Thank you, Mayor. I thought about this a lot today, back and forth. Both sides have good points. The ISD, I've been to a lot of meetings there. I wonder if there's, I'm sure you guys have thought about a lot of different scenarios, but I'm just thinking if there's any kind of space within the building, within those meeting areas and stuff, that you could maybe downsize a little bit to restructure the building. I don't know. I'm just, I'm trying to think outside of the box, which I'm sure you guys have done. Because to me, to tear down this home, like Kathy said, which is 100 years old, and we're trying to entice people to come downtown to live, it goes against that. So I'm just wondering, you know, how much has been thought into it? I guess this is a question, about taking what you have, the space that you have, and redoing the space that you have. I did that within my own home, because I wanted a bigger home, and I didn't want to spend a whole bunch of money. I didn't add on. I took the space that was within my home and redid it. So I'm just wondering if you could possibly do that and make both parties happy? I don't know, but that's kind of my question to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bospas-Rath.
Was that a question to me or just a thought?
Question to Ms. MacArthur, I guess.
Yes, if I could. Thank you.
Okay.
We have looked at how we can utilize space inside the building and that will be part of our transition. As Commissioner Talantino said, we really have people just stacked on, on top of each other. We, we renovated a bathroom and one of our special ed assistants works out of a previous bathroom. So it's not conducive to, to working environment. But just a correction, the, the rezoning ordinance does not negate the purchase agreement that we have. That's an important distinction that I think the commissioner, the commission needs to know.
Thank you very much for answering those questions. City Manager, I wonder if you could just, maybe you already did, but I have a couple of comments. But if you could explain what the alternatives are that you listed in the agenda for those of us that don't have board docs open. Just so we can see if we, so your, let's see, your recommendation is that we deny the requested rezoning, but there are a couple of alternatives there. If you could go over those real quick.
Correct. So with any item, commissioners have a couple of different alternatives and we typically try to list them out. For this particular item, if the commission so chooses, we can schedule a public hearing. The rezoning request is a type of ordinance, so there will have to be a public hearing regardless. So we can, if the commission chooses, we can go right to the public hearing. That doesn't necessarily, for lack of a better term, kill the item. It would just schedule on a public hearing. The commission would have an opportunity to hear more public comments from the public. Or the other one is to approve the requested rezoning and schedule a second reading. So like I said, rezoning requests are a type of ordinance and every ordinance needs a second reading before full adoption. So this is your first reading. Staff recommendation is to deny the request. You could schedule a public hearing for the November 2nd meeting for further consideration. Or you can, if, if, if you feel that you want to approve the request, then you would motion to schedule the second reading on October 19th.
Thank you, City Manager. I have a couple of concerns with the request itself. You know, as, as Commissioner Twardy pointed out, and I think Planning Director Freeman and the City Manager, as far as complying with the, you know, the master plan. But when you look at the actual structure of, of that street and some of the area downtown, there isn't much compliance anyway. And I, I think that it is rather compelling when you go down and look at the ISD building and the shape it's in. It's, it's very well kept. It's very well maintained. The parking lot is neat and they're only open, as Ms. MacArthur said, from 8 till 4. I think if there were another tenant in there or another occupant, it could be certainly a lot different situation as far as traffic. I am, I do have a very hard time overturning some of our commissions or committees work. I think that, you know, they are in those situations and do a good job representing the public and, and certainly vet these requests very well. This one had a 5-2 vote, which is, you know, not real close, but, but there was some, some good discussion, it looks like. I think it's our duty to make sure that we protect the property owners. And, and there was a great letter, I think, from Nancy Steinhaus and a couple other residents in the area. And I know that we have to worry about the integrity of the neighborhood, but the ISD also is a property owner and a neighbor as well. And if they are not, you know, able to continue their operations there, then we could run into some other issues with Blight. And I know that when we look at these requests, we're not supposed to look at the future use of the property. We're supposed to look at the request in conformance with the, the master plan. But I think I side a little bit with Commissioner Talantino. I, I think that I would be willing to consider allowing it. And I certainly would like to get more public input, which is why I asked City Manager to read the alternatives. I think that number two, having a public hearing on November 2nd would, would be good for, for the commission so that we could get more public input and allow both the ISD and Mr. Mansfield and the property owner there to, you know, talk to people and, and get some, some further opinions on this. I think they, they are a great neighbor. They've been there a long, long time. It has, has the school across the street. And they're not looking at ramping up their employment. They're just looking at alleviating some office space problems that they have internally. I don't see that traffic would be an issue. And certainly if we had a public hearing to talk about traffic flow, maybe there are some considerations that we could look at as far as ingress, egress and different routes they could take. So there are all the solutions to every problem. But this, this is one that I would like to give more consideration to and I would like to receive more input personally. So. Any other commissioners have any questions or comments or does anybody want to make any kind of motion? Commissioner Collins?
Yeah, I just have a couple of comments. The, the first one I was thinking about is when we were talking about the traffic. And I know that we've discussed this prior. And have, basically, you know, the, the street traffic is pretty hectic probably from like 7:30 in the morning until about 8:30. And then after school gets out, which is around like 3 o'clock. So like probably between 3:00 and 4:30. The biggest issue that I saw, because my daughter went there for six years, was that as you're leaving, as Commissioner Twardy had said, as you're heading west on that road, you have people trying to come in, heading east to go to the ISD or to actually go into the parking lot to park when they were going into the, the parking lot there that the Chippewa County employees use. So there was a lot of basically head-on traffic there and it's, it's basically a two-lane road. But then when you have cars on the road and then the winter time, you know, basically you're, it's, it's a cluster. So my thought process on that is, you know, what do we need to do to make that a one-way street just for a period of time? If that's even possible. And then the other thing is, is that in reference to, Ms. MacArthur had talked about the fact that the zoning doesn't have, even if we don't approve the zoning, they still have the right to purchase that, which is, which is true. Whether or not you would have a use for it or not would be another thing. But would it be possible to actually retrofit that and make offices in the building? Kind of similar to what Lake State did with the President's Building and so forth. They made it into different offices at one point. So I don't know if that was something that you were thinking about, but I'm definitely in favor of having more public input on this. I mean, I'm kind of torn between what's best for the community, what's best for the neighbors, what's best for ISD. So I definitely like to have more public input before I make a decision. So with that being said, can I make a motion?
Sure.
Okay. So basically I'd like to call for a public hearing to be held on November 2nd, 2020, at the regular commission meeting. Is that good enough or do I have to read the rest of it?
No, I think that's good.
Yeah, no, that's good. The rest is just a note and I accidentally muted you, Commissioner Collins.
The part.
I don't have to reread it, do I?
It has been moved and supported that we schedule a public hearing for, my box popped up and I can't see the date, but it was a meeting in November. Are there any questions or comments before we go to a roll call vote? Commissioner Twardy.
So how much actual, so there's 10 residents that live on this whole entire block. So if, and there's four of those houses are vacant. So you heard from two of the residents, three of the residents, how much power are you going to let the residents who actually live on this street have? So if there's only six houses that actually have occupants in them and you've heard from 50% of them, if you continue to have all of the employees at the ISD come in and allow to give an opinion, you still only have so many residents. And so it's the residents who live here who will continue to live here, who will continue to deal with the issues. And some of the issues that were not brought up is the 3:30, 4:00 AM snow removal. Because there is so much county-owned property and school-owned property and ISD-owned property around here, the school, the snow removal starts very, very, very early on this street, literally 3:30 in the morning. And we have called several times to ask if maybe they could be just a little bit more appropriate. 4:30 is not quite so bad. 4:45 is not quite so bad. But, you know, 3:30 in the morning. So, you know, you really, you have to live to, you have to listen to the residents. And then as far as it being a one-way street, I live all the way on the west end of this block. So anytime I want to get to my driveway, I have to drive all the way around the block. And eventually someday I will move. But the future residents of this home will feel the same way. And there are several times when we come home in the middle of the workday and our driveway is completely blocked by somebody who has to go to these offices. And I'm not saying it's the ISD. I'm not saying it's the school. It could be the court. But because there is so much of a cluster on this block, I think we're adding more fuel to the fire. I mean, next to me, I have a, a four-apartment home, multi-family building and they don't have enough parking. And in the snow, in the winter time, it causes so much stress on this little tiny block. And, I mean, the residents should, they should have the power of the vote, in my opinion. And you've already heard from over 50% of them. And if you, and if you consider my opinion, which my husband did not want to give his, then that's leaning even further as far as the residents. But, you know, let's not have 150 employees come and allow to sway the opinion who don't live here. It's the residents who will continue to live here in the future, even after I'm gone. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else?
Well, I'd just like to make a comment. Just so, Commissioner Twardy and I are on the same page. So my thought process is that I don't need to hear anything from the ISD and the employees because I think their position is pretty sound. I guess I was just looking for, you know, when you looked at the, the comments that we had from the property owners, there was one that was against it, was against actually having ISD go. Actually, there was one for it, two against it, and then with you included, that's three against it and one for it, right? So to me, I just would, if, if they want to, if they want to participate, I would just want to give them the opportunity to participate. Hopefully that makes sense. But I'm not looking for, you know, anybody else coming in from the ISD. I'm looking more for the property owners because I'm, I'm with you on that. I mean, if I was a property owner there, you know, a- as much as ISD has done there and a great building and so forth, I don't want my property value to go down because of the fact that it's no longer considered a residential area or that it might be something that might, you know, take the property value away from my current resident. So I'm definitely with you as far as the fact that the residents, in, in my opinion, especially if they were there first, then they have the first right, I guess, in my opinion. But with that being said, you know, I guess for, for me, I'd still like to have more time to, to even consider it and maybe get some more feedback on it before I make a vote.
Thanks, Commissioner Collins.
Just to clarify, Robin, Robin, there is a motion in the second, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
It has been, yes, Commissioner Miller.
I just, I just wanted to say that I, I agree with Commissioner Collins. But the thing is, if you're going to open this up for a public hearing, you can't really dictate who's going to, who's going to talk, who's going to, I mean, it's, you, you may get, you may get 100 employees in the ISD, whatever, but if you're going to open it up for a public hearing, we can't dictate who, who talks, right?
Correct. All right. Anybody else? It has been moved and supported. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
No.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Bospas-Rath?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
All right. Motion passed. We'll have a public hearing on November 2nd, 2020, at our regular city commission meeting. And we'll let you know if that's going to be a Zoom meeting or an in-person meeting, maybe. So.
And just, just so we're on the same page too, the public notice process, we'll send flyers or notices to the residents, just as Kelly did with the, the public notice for the plan commission. So we'll kind of follow that process. There'll be something in the newspaper and then there'll be something most likely on our Facebook as well. So we're not going to do anything outside of the ordinary. We'll follow our normal processes that dictate public hearings.
Thank you, City Manager. Commissioner Miller?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have a quick question then. So we'll have the public hearing on November 2nd and then what's the, what steps do we take after that?
Well, we either approve it or...
What, what would the timeline be?
November 2nd. So you'd have the public hearing November 2nd and then immediately afterwards, just like any other item, the commission would take it up for consideration and action.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Miller. All right, moving on. G, business items number three. And thank you to everybody that participated in that last item. G, business items three. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For commission consideration is a request for an agreement with the city and the Chippewa County Prosecutor's Office for Prosecution Services. As we discussed several meetings ago, and as you're well aware with the retirement of the city attorney back in January, February, we had to reevaluate how those services are handled and take it as an opportunity to see who handles those services. So as we described to you, the city attorney's office kind of handles two key functions. One is general counsel to the city as an organization and one as the local prosecutor for municipal infractions. With this agreement, the county prosecutor's office would handle our local offenses. Without this agreement, the prosecutor would have greater discretion in deciding whether or not to handle those local violations. So what this actually does is by having them sign on to an agreement and us paying them fees, this ensures our teeth in the process with any kind of municipal violation. We've talked over with the prosecutor's office. We came to a kind of a tentative agreement with this contract for your consideration. We are all in a good spot with the contract. This will cover all of our services from the police department to Blight and other ordinance issues within the community development department. The total contract is about $22,000 per year, $22,500 per year. We do have it budgeted within the city attorney's budget where it will be housed. We didn't know how to budget that item, so we did throw a little extra money. Or we budgeted on average as if that office was still filled by somebody. So the money is there. We would just recommend a motion to approve the contract or the agreement as presented.
Thank you, City Manager. Commissioner Miller, do you have any questions or comments on this item?
Yes, I do. I have a question for the City Manager. Since, since our city attorney retired, then has the Chippewa County prosecu-, have they been handling this for us so far?
They have been in an informal role without any fees. We had several cases that were kind of in the midst of the prosecution. So they did pick them up for us as we took some time to analyze where we were at and where we wanted to go in the future. So they were filling it in. But again, with, with the agreement, we kind of get a priority. So the prosecutor's office does have some discretion in terms of what they decide to charge and what they don't. Our officers or even the Blight officer, they typically would handle a complaint. They document it. They do whatever they have to do. And then that moves on to the county prosecutor's office. And the prosecutor gets to determine whether or not it sees a trial. And with this case, these will, with this contract, this will ensure that our local ones do get proper treatment and prosecution actually moves forward. and prosecution actually moves forward. I did have a situation downstate before I came up here where we didn't have a contract with the prosecutor. And a lot of our little cases that we were trying to put some teeth into some minors, some other offenders, they were being thrown out under prosecution discretion, prosecutor discretion. And what we were trying to nip in the butt as a little problem eventually snowballed into a bigger problem. So we want to make sure that our local ordinances do have the ability to be fully prosecuted and carried out. That was a really long answer for your short question. I apologize.
That's okay. I just wanted to, can I continue, Your Honor?
Sure.
I just, looking this over, I think this is a, I mean, the prosecutor's office is a, they're, they handle so much every single day. I think it's great that they're going to do this for us for $22,000 a year. I just want to show my support for this. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks, Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Talentino, any questions or comments?
Just a quick comment, Your Honor. I think it's a great idea. I think it's going to help us get things through quicker, more timely fashion. I'm all for this motion. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Talentino. Commissioner Baspus, or I'm sorry, Commissioner Twardy?
I'm assuming that this is some sort of a cost savings to the taxpayers for legal services? Would you happen to know that, Brian?
I mean, I, I can't tell you what the cost savings will be right now because we are still working off the dollar amount that, as if we still had somebody in that seat. So all of the city attorney's fees went to the services plus everything else. So, I mean, I can't give you a concrete, yes, this will be a savings because it's also going out of the city attorney off, or city attorney budget. If something big was to happen on the general counsel side, you know, it could go bigger than that. So is it, is it a cost savings? I don't know. My gut says it's going to be moving forward. More importantly, is it a good deal for the services?
That too. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Commissioner Twardy. Commissioner Baspus-Rath?
Yeah, I really don't have any questions. I'm in support of this. So thank you.
Commissioner Collins?
Yeah, so City Manager, this is going to be tracked as a line item with inside the current legal services or budget, correct?
Correct, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
And I have a few comments. Just, I, I think it is reasonable, and I think it's a good contract. And it'll be, we certainly appreciate any, everything that the prosecutor's office has done to us now. And I think it is an enhancement because this affords us consultation 24 hours a day, seven days a week, which is something that we couldn't have if we had a one-person city attorney. So I'm certainly all in favor of it. Commissioner Miller, do you have board docs open or did it not?
I do, I do, Your Honor, yes.
Would you like to make the motion?
Yes, Your Honor, I would. Thank you. I move to approve the prosecutorial and legal advice services of the Chippewa County Prosecutor's Office as presented within the agreement.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. Any questions or comments from commissioners? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Talentino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Baspus-Rath?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. G Business Items Number Four, City Manager Chapman.
Rookie move, sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For commission consideration, up next is a resolution to submit a grant application to the federal government under the Safe Routes to School Resolution through MDOT. Tonight, what we have is a resolution that would authorize us to submit the grant application. As you're all aware, the Safe Routes to School program, or particularly the project here at the local level, has been something that the city and the school district's been working on for a couple of years now. We've gotten it back on track. We're planning on submitting the application prior to the October 16th due date. With that process comes a resolution from the commission that promises that they have the money and they'll carry the project forward. Part of that process is also a public hearing. So when I'm done giving my analysis here, Mr. Mayor, I need you to open up a public hearing, take any comments, and then close the public hearing and then have commission discussion in action. So the total project itself is about $550,000. The eligible funding that we have between all the schools that are on the applications, about $660,000. We are planning on a bit of a contingency fund. Projects do tend to go over every now and then, and we just want to make sure we're safe. So we're looking at a 15%, 20% contingency. So this particular item has two motions associated with it. Motion to approve the resolution as presented, and motion to establish the budget for $632,500. So with that, I would ask you to open up the public hearing and receive any comments.
Thank you, City Manager. We will now have a public hearing on the Safe Routes to School Resolution in front of the commission. So we will open the public hearing on the Safe Routes to School Resolution. Is there anybody in the audience that has any comments for the public hearing at this time? If you could please unmute your microphone and address the commission. We just need your name and residence. Anybody like to speak to the Safe Routes to School Resolution? This is a public hearing of the City Commission of Sioux St. Marie. All right, going once, going twice, seeing none, we will close the public hearing of the Safe Routes to School Resolution, and we'll go to the city commission for comments. We'll start with Commissioner Twardy. I know she's worked on Safe Routes to School.
For a long time. I think it's probably going back almost seven years. So it's really exciting to see it finally come to fruition. It was just this little idea with frustration with trying to get my kids to middle school and high school and seeing kids try to cross that street and just every mother's nightmare. So I'm really excited to see this moving forward for the safety of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Baspus-Rath, any questions or comments?
No, I will just piggyback off what Commissioner Twardy said. It's great. I, I had the joy of living three houses from Lincoln School, so I was good. But my mom watched me walk the whole time, so I understand and we want these kids to be safe. So I, I love this.
Commissioner Collins, any questions or comments?
I'm good. Thank you.
Commissioner Miller, any questions or comments?
Just, I think this is wonderful. I, like Commissioner Twardy said, I know I've been working on this for going back six, seven years. And anything to keep children safe going to school, I think is great. Thank you.
Commissioner Talentino, any questions or comments?
Thank you. I don't know. I think this is a great program. You know, knowing that this is for the elementary schools and middle school only, actually has nothing to do with the high school. But I, I did have my, my eldest son was actually hit by a truck crossing actually that road going over towards the high school. So I think this is a very big and very important thing that we need to get done. I think it's going to add some great sidewalks, crosswalks. There's a whole bunch of things that were talked about at one of the meetings. I think it's a great idea, and I'm looking forward to this actually coming, coming true. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Talentino. So there are two motions that we need to, two separate motions. Commissioner Twardy, did you want to make these motions?
I'd love to. A motion to approve the Safe Routes to School Resolution as presented.
Support.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Are there any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Baspus-Rath?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talentino?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Commissioner Twardy, the second motion, please.
Thank you. Motion to establish a budget for the Safe Routes to School project for $632,500.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Baspus-Rath?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talentino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
And that motion passed unanimously also. Thank you very much. City Manager, announcements and updates. And I know you've got a few on there now. So take it away, City Manager Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few things. I did add on a couple of things. First and foremost, city hall and city facilities, we closed for Veterans Day. It's a federal holiday. We're not going to be not at work, per se. We had an idea to get advantage of federal holidays that people think were closed on so that we can close the facilities clean, do in-service training, catch up on projects. We're going to try this first one here in November with Veterans Day. So facilities will be closed, phones will be off essentially, and we are going to focus on staff training, staff projects, and anything else that we need to do to kind of catch up. There's some desks throughout city hall that could be cleaned off. So we're going to have areas like that focused on. So just keep you in the loop on that one. Another thing that we are working on with the political science department at LSSU is a citizen survey. We're looking to administer that next semester, so their winter-spring semester. What this basically will be is a scientific survey that will have a sample population of the citizenry here in the city. And we will ask kind of in a citizen or a customer satisfaction form how well we are doing on services and the importance of those services so we can find any kind of performance gaps moving back, moving forward. I think the last time the city has done something like this, probably about 2014-ish. What I like to do is try to incorporate this into an every-year or every-other-year process so that we can actually track any progress that we're making on some of our services. So if there's an area that the sample population, which represents the city, says that we're doing really bad on, you know, it's one thing to come together, get some projects going, try to improve that service. But if you're not following up a year or two afterwards on how well you're doing, if you're making any progress, then you never know if you're really going to be successful. So it's a citizen survey, but it's actually more of a customer satisfaction survey. It encompasses a lot of our services from roads, garbage collection, recycling, you know, permits in the community development department, some of the police services, some of the fire services, the whole gauntlet. So that process or that program will be administered by LSSU's political science department. So there's a little bit of unbiased in terms of the administration there. But we're going to utilize one of their classes. It'll be a research project for them. And then at the conclusion of it, they'll make a presentation to staff and the commission. So I always like doing these things. I think they're very helpful. I think they're pretty informative. And I'm looking forward to seeing what we get back in that one. Just a quick minor vacation days. I'll be off the 8th and the 9th this week, so it's Thursday, Friday this week. And then I will be out on vacation the entire week of the 19th through the 23rd. Robin will be filling in for me during that time. Now, the, the bigger and more important one at this point, as you're all aware through the emails and everything else that's been going on, the governor phased back the UP. She issued some executive orders. The Supreme Court said they're all but useless. And then to top it off, the Attorney General said that she's not enforcing anything anymore. So where does that really leave us in terms of what we're doing and what we can do? We don't really know. So there's a lot of speculation right now. The Michigan Department of Health and Human Services has issued several emergency orders within their statutory ability that basically clones or duplicates some of the executive orders that are in place. This was just released, I think about 5 o'clock, so the end of the day is normal, right? Masks, restrictions on roof sizes, indoors and outdoors. Kind of the, the bigger meat of the executive orders, those are still in place as of early this evening or late this afternoon through the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. What does that mean from enforcement? How does that play in with the restaurants and all that stuff? I don't really know. You know, the governor made a comment essentially that there's more than one way to skin a cat. There are other ways of getting the outcomes that the administration was seeking. So they'll be pursuing those avenues. There is some talk about 20-day, 21-day effective period after the Supreme Court rules. That one's kind of up in the air. That doesn't really make sense. So we don't really know what that means. So, so for us as an organization, what are we doing moving forward? We're still requiring masks. We're still socially distancing. When it comes to the commission meetings, the next one will most likely be in person. I'm 95% sure it will be in person. Without the executive orders, we don't have any legality to continue online meetings. So those ones will have to be in person. There are two bills on the floor right now in the Senate and in the House downstate that are looking to put in some special exemptions within the Open Meetings Act. So under a county or a local declaration of emergency, we could facilitate meetings via Zoom. Do those have tractions? When will those get passed? If they get passed, I don't really know. But there is some movement down land scene to try to make them happen. But I have no idea when that will go through. So it will be good television moving forward, coming out of land scene the next couple of weeks here. We'll see what happens, but certainly we'll keep you guys up to date on any changes operationally as we move forward. But right now, we're taking a status quo kind of approach, except for commission meetings. Those will be in person, so. Other than that, I have nothing else.
Your definition of good television is obviously different than mine. Does anybody have any questions or comments for City Manager on his announcements and updates? Commissioner Miller?
So, Mr. Chapman, our next meeting then starts in person?
Yes, yes. All because Robin is going to be sitting in for me and taking over. I called the governor and made that happen, so.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, until something else changes, right?
Yes, plan. But unless something else happens, if you don't hear from us, but we'll reiterate this too, plan on your October 19th meeting being in person.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? All right. Been following this alphabet correctly. We're to item I, Matters Presented by the Public. Would anybody in the public like to make any comments in front of the city commission this evening? If you could unmute and give us your name and, and your residence, we'll give you five minutes to speak in front of the commission. So any matters presented by the public? Anybody like to speak to the commission?
There was a chat that just came in. Let me look at it really quick. Never mind. I can handle this one.
Okay. All right, seeing none, we'll move to item J, which is Matters Presented by the City Commission. So commissioners. Commissioner Twardy?
I just wanted to hit on the Buy Nearby program that, this was the first year for it. I think it was actually a small business program out of the state of Michigan. And then we decided to bring it into the city of Sioux St. Marie for, so for those of you who did go out and buy nearby and shop a small store with the door this weekend, thank you very much for doing so. It was an amazing business weekend at both of our businesses. In fact, at my popcorn shop, it was the second best day of the year, so that says something. And then after we closed, we were able to go out and enjoy a few local small businesses also. So it was, it's a great program. I'd love to see that continue. And I know a lot of it was Justin Nepper's work, but then it's also our brand-new DDA director who just came in. So she's doing fantastic job so far. So thank you again to those of you who shopped at a small business this weekend.
Good comments. As always, buy nearby or shop local. It certainly is critical. Good comments, as always, buy nearby or shop local, it certainly is critical to our, uh, to self-sustenance of the community, so any other Commissioners have any comments? Commissioner Miller?
If our next meeting's going to be in person, have the heat on, it's freezing in here.
Part of our cost-saving measures. City Manager doesn't look very cold, though.
No, he's got all the heat over there, well, he's got all the hot air over there.
Yeah. You got a little lumps of cool over here, too.
Any other Commissioners have any comments? Uh, Commissioner Twardy, do you want to make a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Support.
Been moved and supported that we adjourn this meeting, solid papers, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
Night.
Thank you, Your Honor.